This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, let's begin with Mindy.
I guess I need to know this hearing.
Well, we have to do that public hearing. It's right about that.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
So I'll read the notice of the public. Notice is here, I give him that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Placid will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 29, 2021, at 3:30 PM by a go-to meeting for considering the adoption of the 2021-22 village budgets. Dial-in information will be provided on the Lake Placid Village website and Facebook page. A complete copy of the tentative budgets may be found on the Village website at villageoflakeplacid.ny.gov, or you may have painted a copy at the Village Clerk's office, 2693 Main Street, Suite 204, Lake Placid, New York, 12946. All interested persons are invited to participate in the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. Immediately following the public hearing, there will be a special board meeting for the purpose of adopting the 2021-22 village budgets. Signed, Anita A. Esclay, Village Clerk, dated June 21, 2021.
Very much. So our next move at this point is to wait for any questions or just announce?
Yeah.
Looks like we have one participant. Does anyone have any questions on the budget? Very quiet. It's okay. So I assume at this point, we are open until... For public comment? Until?
Is it two-way? No, can't be two-way right now.
No, 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 literally, if we want to close in like within a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, with no one else asking any questions or any questions from the board? At this point, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so now we have to do the special board meetings. We have a pledge. So these two are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so we're here to approve the new budget. You'll see in front of you, it says adopted, but once you go into the budget itself, it still says may I recommend. I think you guys should approve it before it's sure. Couple more things in this one than there were in the previous one. Constitutional tax limit did go 5%. You'll notice that our appropriation of fund balance is slightly higher because we did go from the 3.36% of the levy that we could have taken to 2%. We did all of the increases that were discussed during the executive session. Those numbers are also in here, as well as adding to part-time people from the street for in brackets portion.
Yep. So Kimball had asked for additional. Is that in the budget? Right?
The two hires.
The two hires?
You're talking to the groundsman?
Yeah.
That's on hold for now.
So that's not in the budget?
The money is in the budget?
The money is in the budget.
Once we get to that point, yes, the money is in the budget. The levy calculation is on the next page. We did not have any adjustments to our final tax rolls when I received them from the tentative that was originally sent to us.
And that broke your heart.
Oh, yeah. She's a bunch more figuring. Our constitutional tax limit, that's in there this term as well. It just lists out all the bonds that we're paying for and the additional payment that you need to purchase. And then tax exempt property report. Our schedule of debt is listed out all of our debt payments for the year. Apple returns and then employee wages. Let me... The only modifications that were made to the budget, budget itself, were the appropriation of fund balance, just to accommodate the changes that were reflected by the board, and those changes are now reflected in the budget itself. That's all, yeah.
Makes it sound simple. What have you done the last three months? Any questions? Just need a...
So I think we need to take them each separately. That's how we've always done them in the past. I believe we need to do them...
Oh, yes, or water.
So they're all wires that were not...
Right. Plus, I think Janet was here, she would say since this is by judicial, exact, they're all public.
Okay, so first general, correct? Do I have a motion to accept the general budget? Second.
Hold on.
Trustee Leon?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
No.
Trustee Galvin?
Aye.
Trustee Devlin?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Water next, did you say?
Uh, electric.
Electric.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not sure what order we take them in.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the electric portion of the budget?
Motion. Second.
Any questions? All in favor? I'm sorry, and then trustee Leon?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
And trustee Galvin?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then you need water? Motion to accept the water portion of the budget?
Motion. Second.
Trustee Leon?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
Trustee Galvin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Did I interrupt? Any sort of...
Sire.
Okay, motion to accept the sewer.
Motion. Second.
Trustee Leon?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
Trustee Galvin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Did we run out of...
I think that's good.
Good. Okay.
I think that is all for this meeting. If someone wants to close it?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is closed. Thank you, Miss, for your hard work.
Thanks for the incredible.
Now back to you again.
So for the administrator that... Fortune. The New York State government came out with some additional COVID funding. This came out a while back, and originally it was the county applied for it. Well, it was federal funding, so the state applied for it, and then the county, they lived in, applied for it, and then the county dispersed it to the town or village, to the town, and the town to the village, in our case. This particular one, we can apply for ourselves.
And not go through the county? Because this is what we were talking about at NICOM.
The coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. It's not a guarantee that we're going to... Essentially, you have to show fiscal distress from '19 to '20. We didn't lay anybody off, but that being said, we put people on call versus keeping them here. So we have one shift that was on call for the week and one shift that was working for the week. That way, if one shift got COVIDed, then we had another shift to cover.
Does that create overtime?
No.
You just worked it half-staffed. Of course, most everything was shut down, so those things were...
So Brad would have a crew of, or Kimball would have a crew of, say, four guys on per one week, and then the following week, those guys would be off for the week.
Do we can shift differential if somebody starts at 2:00 in the afternoon or...
Um, no. The police departments stay pretty much the same as they were, and they're the ones, I think, that in the fire department.
The fire department, yeah.
Brad was lucky, he could do, he still had some guys that were on the night crew, so he could split them up that way and do split shifts. Kimball had a really good idea when he started bringing them back. He was staggering them at different times so that there were less people on.
They weren't standing around with a ticking clock.
Right.
Right?
And holding claws and like all...
There is an online application that I can fill out, and it goes through our SAM government platform, which we have access to. This particular, as I said, through budget year '19 through '20. So I'll submit the information. As I said, they may or may not see that we had a fiscal distress because it looks like normal as usual, except for our decrease in electric payments and our decrease in water sewer usage, which decreased our overall revenues. And the fact that we kept all of our employees working during that timeframe may justify that particular grant. So I will keep everyone posted and known. The application has to be in by the 9th of July, so I'll get it in tomorrow.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, thank you again.
That ends for me.
It is. Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, Kimball? Tell us about your digger repair.
If anyone needs them.
Our, the back, the second digger, Derek, has a hydraulic leak, which is in the main district. Has to go to Zaltex repair facility. nearest repair facility is in Tree Ferry, Massachusetts. Since we are probably a year and four and a half months out from our new digger showing up, I recommend sending it for repairs. Another thing is, I did investigate renting one, but they are three grand a month, and they're not available, so it really doesn't make that. And I feel like the cost of repairs, a little bit over $10,000, $10,333, $35,000. I believe that that we can recover from the salvage value when we sell this one when the new one comes. So sum it up, we need it. Yes. And then we get the money, thanks, and we get the money back. So, yeah. And...
You're going to have...
If I analyze the new one over 30 years, it's about $1,000 a month, so this is $10,000.
You're going to have them come and take it out?
I'd like to. I was worried about liability. Janet kind of sent this long paper, fight certificate of insurance, which I got, and we have had transport companies drive our trucks before. I just kind of wanted to cover that part. I just feel like it's a four-hour, 19-minute drive in a normal vehicle, so you're talking two men, probably 11 hours each trip. I don't think we can drive it for... What are they charging us? $2,300 block, so for going to...
Plus their insurance, yeah?
Yeah.
So, anybody have any questions? Great.
Peter's on there.
Is that below? It's below.
So it's not Peter?
It's probably Peter.
Can you sign this in Peter's absence?
Sure.
I'll get this moment.
Can this borrow one of the next three years I have here in town?
Well, it's a, it's a digger truck. You know, a couple lake cats, one, but it's an hour here, an hour back, they're now without their digger, you know? One thing I did look into was possibly the work money, but I just think the best bet is $10,000 repairs. So, but Peter wasn't real comfortable signing it without... This is around that one.
Okay. Cool. Okay, and that brings us...
Oh, that's not below.
There is having baby side.
Just having kids all over.
It's like...
Baby side.
Oh, really? I was stuck on Sarah and my cabinet, it's pretty accident.
Oh.
No poles. It lasts four weeks, by the way. Blood over my mouth.
Is that a record?
One that we never exceed. Or what? Or utility poles, probably. No poles this time.
Let's hope everyone's...
I thought it was due to pull over.
Okay, just in time for Ironman and lacrosse guidelines. I think we've been in touch with all of you as far as what was asked of us, and this was just a response that I came up with with Bill and some of the input from the board and a few people I talked to. I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to read this.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. They would like, I don't know, we would probably have to have a formal board meeting to approve this, but I would like to let them go ahead and get this word out so they...
This may sound rather right-wing, but is it coming from Bill and not you and Jamie?
No, this was something that Bill and I did together.
Oh, you drafted it.
We had, we had a draft that Jay had, and then Bill took it and redid it, and now it's on his, and then we tweaked what he had, so it just says Bill on it.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that's the way it was going out.
No, it's actually going to Haley, who was going to send it out for the town and village last I knew.
That makes perfect sense.
Signed by the bill viewer.
Yes, yeah. That's the last I heard. Okay, but at this point, everyone's happy, whether we can get the word out. If we have to do a formal...
Yes.
At our next board meeting, we will. Okay, that was easy and good. Let's, let's just pray that this new Delta variant doesn't change all of our plans, but COVID has just never stopped giving to us. Okay, Janet has worked on, I have a copy, she's, she's done the extended hours, so I've got that. Hopefully, we can get that out so we can have a public hearing on that. She has started on the no smoking or combustibles in the village. We did get the law from Freeport. We did talk to their lawyers, but she is now in contact with Wadeville Tram Hall at NICOM.
Okay.
To make sure that we can prohibit them on Main Street, which is a New York State highway.
I think Freeport, Freeport's Main Street, it's a county road, it's not a...
Or a city road. They're a city.
Yeah.
But they're a village.
No, they're a village. So that's why I think the difference is.
Yep, so...
What do you bring up a penalty and how would that would be enforced?
It was in the, the Freeport one, and I think we'll have to get to that eventually, but theirs was pretty severe.
It was. It was like five, it was five grand.
Yeah, but the whole point of the law was to protect people who were smoking pot.
Was to protect people?
Yeah, well, that's what it is. And so you can publicly smoke pot without penalty, but now we're telling people they're gonna, if they smoke pot on the street, they pay $5,000.
Well, you're a public use. You can drink, you can drink alcohol just out of our public streams.
It's not to protect the pot smoking or...
But to non-penalize it.
No, we're gonna penal, we're gonna ping pot, just like an open container.
Yeah, but they won't receive any jail time for saying... No, you think it's enforceable because it's...
Do I think it's enforceable?
I do.
Yeah, I do. You don't?
I do, I do.
Well, I think it's enforceable. I mean, whether we choose to be the enforcing agent.
Well, I spoke with Bill more, he says it's enforceable, so...
And I think he will gladly do it. I think he will gladly have this control and do it.
I think it's completely reasonable not to allow that on public.
Right.
And then having the fines be severe enough to discourage that and take your personal business and do your personal business.
I mean, they enforce open container.
Yeah.
Like I say, this is, this isn't fine hours, the final draft, we're waiting for Wadeville Tram Hall, but this is, this is at least a start. I just wanted to let you know, these, these two pieces were in the works. Another part of that, I spoke in with Lori Fitzgerald, and as far as she was in favor of this, and I hadn't, I guess I hadn't circled back to you, but we're trying to discourage people from parking in the big parking lot. We have a trolley that starts up Thursday, but still, that doesn't mean people aren't going to just say, oh, who cares? It's only 75 cents an hour, I'll just park here. That's where I've wanted us to consider, while Janet's doing this, do we want to change, or I guess we can do that on our own, do we want to change the rate of the big lot to $2? Or are we hoping to accomplish that? Just wait people to go to the train station lot, not park up our lot so people can park there and shop on Main Street.
So paying customers to park there, not the workers, order workers.
Or not paying customers to park. Right, but I mean, I think if you don't, you're gonna get a lot of these guys, because they get a parking allowance, go, hey, I don't want to ride the train station, I'm just gonna park here and pay the 75 cents an hour. I'm just hoping this would give them a notch. Like I said, I ran that by Lori, and she thought that was a good idea, but...
It's just that what we're gonna start on turn two, because, well, we got a couple more years of this construction going on, and then when we get to the end of it, that means we'll have...
It's $2 a lot for a...
$2 on Main Street?
On Main Street?
Oh, I'm thinking $2 a...
$2 an hour?
On Main Street? It's already two, it's already $2 an hour on Main Street, anyway.
The only thing...
This is a mini lot.
It's already $2.
What's that?
By the post.
Oh, yeah, it's already $2 an hour on Main Street.
Correct.
But like, you're thinking of making it comparable to the bigger lot.
Well, you're losing, what, until the end of July, 87 places on Main Street? And I'm just thinking, these become premium slots, and do you really, I want to discourage people that aren't going to Main Street to shop not to use it.
Do we know? I, I agree with you in your theory to what the $2, has anyone had a discussion with the construction worker, saying what?
Well, you might have had discussions with ORDER as far as getting them, encourage them to go down there. I'm just trying to get it across so that we get our tourists that want to shop on Main Street a place to park. But it's just a suggestion I threw out, nothing set in stone, it's up to you guys, whatever you'd like to do. I'm just bringing it up.
So it's, it's even across the board? Main Street and the municipal lot and the NBT will all be too much?
That's what I'm suggesting, but you guys...
That's what I'm thinking, and I, I've always thought that having that big lot be last would encourage people who are gonna do the street for the whole day.
Which if there's room to be parked. And it's not all taken up by construction.
Right, which is what's happening right now. But I'm thinking, I'm not thinking the next two years, I'm thinking longer term. Like when I've sailed breakfast column, I tell them to park in that big lot, they're gonna be in the store for about...
Well, is this a temporary situation? Because September, there'll be less construction, or as ORDER's construction work stops, there'll be less construction work.
I'm just, to use fairs to discourage constru-, I don't think that should be our goal.
You use fairs to regulate parking?
Exactly.
And if you don't want that parking lot filled up with people that may not be looking to shop, I don't believe anyone's going to not shop Main Street because they have to pay $2 an hour. That's just my opinion.
And that's fine, and, but I can counterfind people who think $2 an hour is too much to park, especially if they're from like the Tri-Lakes, like people coming over from Saranac Lake or used to free marking over there, or they're like, wow, this is so...
All I did was throw out a suggestion. You guys make the decision. I'm good with anything.
To dissuade people from parking the quarters.
Yeah.
I think that's having the conversations with...
What are you gonna do beyond that? I mean, I've had that conversation with, with Mike Pratt.
And...
And I've had it, but I'm just thinking, this is a good way to enforce it, but it's, it's up to you guys, whatever you want.
But it's also, it's also penalizing customers on, on the street.
So...
Right?
Would we be discriminating against the construction workers on, on...
You can't, you've got to set a fair on what anyone wants to pay.
We can't just park in for construction like we do on Main Street where it's a, they're parking on Main Street, is that generally...
These are just upstairs. These are employees that are just coming, they're not doing the work site. I mean, they're not asking for a parking place that's theirs, they're just going into a public parking lot and parking.
And coming in to do construction.
Yes. At 6:00 in the morning when the lot's empty and...
They're gonna have first come, first served.
I...
It's different than you putting cones out, like, is what you're talking about, where we charge $50 now, so you want three spaces, and you put the cones out, and they're yours, you gotta pay for it. But for someone who's just a construction worker that works for someone, it's a public parking thing.
I understand, I hear the intention there, but it's not like we're gonna go back and lower the rate number. Why not?
Well, I was thinking...
We can do whatever we want.
I was, I was thinking this was temporary.
But like I said, I'm, I'm just throwing a suggestion out. You guys see what you think.
But it's still gonna hurt people this summer, I guess.
So you've had construction like that, and then who's the liaison for the construction group for ORDER? Because there must have a project manager.
They do, you know, it's Bob Hammond's office, it's Matt Lynch, I mean...
Terry.
And they can't, and they haven't been able to...
There's 300 guys over there. They, they've reached out, you know, I don't know what more they can do, because the ease of them parking though is that they go out there at lunchtime, so now they have no place to go. And so I made a suggestion, well, let's create, is there a place that we can create a lunch area for these guys? You know, they wanna make phone calls, they wanna...
They take it open, Stan?
No, that's, I guess from a public's perspective, like, oh, now it's going up to $2 an hour because of ORDER and ORDER's inability to manage their instruction work. You see, you see, that's what be the, and that's just, that would be the initial sort of...
And I'll throw this out there, too. It's $2 now, we're gonna do a discouraging...
And then there's, yeah. It's always...
Exactly, well, and then that's the worst point where they've given every, I mean...
Carrie Ryan said...
So, so, all right, let's, we don't do anything. If we, if we leave it at 75 cents an hour, the parking lot's gonna be full with construction workers.
Maybe, maybe, who knows? I think I said I was just, of course, I don't try to get them to...
You know, we don't have a dollar anymore. It's more than that.
Yeah. It's much quarter an hour.
No, I, I mean, I just...
Just give a number.
I know. Three weeks ago, we were... I guess that'd be, why'd we pick 75 cents?
Oh, we raised it. A lot of us...
Yeah, but double nothing is not much.
But I, I, I appreciate that you, I think what I've noticed in the last couple of months is you've always worked to find that they sort of compromise, and, and it's appreciated. It's just this particular, for me, this particular situation.
To know when.
And, well, I just, I've never heard in my experience that you're inviting people in to do a job, and you tell them, you can't park here. They generally won't, so somewhere on the line...
We aren't going to be inviting them. We are, the village isn't doing the construction, it's someone else. We can't control them or their employees.
It's a public parking.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, I'm just trying to find a middle ground. I know the only, the best way, if there's not parking, is to race parking, it discourages some, but it allows people to park. Granted, it's going to catch a person at $2 an hour, means nothing to, but if we want to not take a chance and leave it at 75 cents, which is really cheap for a village, and take a chance and that someone just decides to walk the lake and go all day and just park in that parking lot, I'm just throwing a suggestion out, but it's whatever, it's the pleasure of the board, I've got no stake in this either way. I'm trying to facilitate. The last one I want to do is find that these guys say, oh, this is a joke, I'll just park here, and the Main Street merchants don't have anywhere to, their employees are patrons to park.
And no, I want to do is discourage my customers.
If you think that's what's going to happen, I'm definitely actually trying to help your customers, but if you think it's the other, I'm gonna let you speak for Main Street, I'm happy to keep it at 75. Doesn't bother me in the least.
What's this? Do they get parking allowance, or are they just choosing to pay their own parking as part of...
It depends upon the contractor and what they, you know.
From what you know, how much are they allotted if they are?
That I don't know.
Maybe because that's something that, um, question that would give us some guidance, would say, really, the question would be, or, or.
Or this word, I mean, mitigate a gay house, we just don't want them to.
Gay's not gonna come that quick, that's a quarter of a million dollars. And. Get all that one around, the other one was raising parking fines from 25 to 50.
And I think the other part of that, really, and I talked about is raising without, without these loading zone fines as well. Because they need to be a little bit more severe than.
Yeah.
So I think loading zones only 50. And why is it supposed to be 75 or?
Is there a separate charge for handicaps?
I think it's $20.
Is it, is it accessible?
All right, so loading zones, you wanted, you're recommending 50 to 75?
I think, I think you have to have it a little bit more severe than that. And then the, the other part of that too, someone is on, and they have to assign it for it, if somebody parks in a permitted spots. Having a, a, a sign for that, whether it's a loading zone fine.
Yeah, so I just went into, I know it was under your last story, there are a couple of new categories.
Not just a violation of, because you're, you don't have a parking permit, you're not allowed a parking permit spot. I don't know what the legal charter is.
I was just, I saw, I was just, I like, it was a tour of the United States from Portland to the streets lot. I know it's a number used lot, but it's Connecticut, California, Florida. I'm just like.
Good.
I don't see a permit in here. You're really doing.
I wouldn't enforce those.
What's that?
I wouldn't enforce those. Was there parking down there?
Yeah, but I just, but that's, I think that's very consistent between there.
Yeah, that's not wrong.
Yeah, so it's like, it's an overall lack. I understand the number of stuff. No, many things are, so.
And then we have to start working on getting extra enforcement to, we are an extra hour.
If you can find any employees anywhere, you let me know, because I could use three for motel. Anybody.
We hired four this summer, four adults.
How, how, what are the hours we're looking for?
We have the motel.
No. I was thinking of a parking lot, you know.
He's bored with it, he wants to.
No, I have a whole bunch of work, I'm sitting in the front.
Nine to eight Monday through Saturday.
You're talking about the expanded parking hours.
Like having parking portions just other than.
Oh, we're, we're, we're working finding someone, but that hasn't proved to be very easy. And what was your question, Jason?
What were the hours of looking for, for people to do this?
You mean.
Nine to eight. Nine to eight.
So we can't find anybody, is it worth putting a patrolman?
We already have. No, we've started letting the police do it in their spare time. And it basically becomes sporadic and it's. That's right, so that's, that's already happened.
Since it hasn't been enforced after five forever, most important is gonna be after in the evening. It's the night used to it.
Bucky can be brought in at different times.
So we got it.
Yeah.
I mean, the PD, the regular PD, they do that thing in the evening, walk the streets, so maybe gets people to pay. Well, if we're gonna move the hours, and that's a. Yeah, there's always pain now. Yeah, that's out of enforcement. Although I hope the point of you.
Perhaps to let people know how to change them.
Give me tickets.
Other than Mark, I don't know about you and your J1s, I haven't talked to anybody that can find employees for anything. Everyone is short-staffed on everything you do, anywhere you go.
Any, any field too.
Yeah, every, everything, across the board. You talk to people from other states, it's the same thing. So let's just recap item four and five here. The no smoking policy, Janet's working on the ability to do it on Main Creek and other roads. That's good. Soon as she can get that, we'll get that in the works, then it's gonna require a public hearing. We're talking about raising parking fines from 25 to 50. Then the loading zones possible from 50 to 75. And I will find out what the fine is for parking in a permitted spot without a permit.
And make sure handicap's more than 75.
I'm almost positive. I think it's 100 and something. So. Expanded hours, where she's working, that's good. And then it just comes down to what's the pleasure of the board for the big lot? Like I said, I, I just threw a suggestion out, but I'm happy to go with the board's pleasure.
Like I said, two months ago, I think 75 cents is dumb. Make it a round number. I don't give us more revenue, it's not gonna help at all with this other issue, but at least it'll give us more revenue. And five an hour is still, I can support it. It's gotta be cheaper than on the street, otherwise people are just gonna pay it. Because the fine is the same, an immunity law, this is on the street, the fine. So, no incentive to park in immunity lot, $2 an hour.
Well, at least there's parking.
Yeah, but they're gonna try to park in the street first. Why wouldn't they? Because they'll.
Yeah, and then when that's taken up, and the others are taken up, they lost.
But then, yeah, more employees who park in the street, the less the customers are gonna be able to spend the money. And that will be addressed with the extended, the expanded hours now. So that should be.
Should be.
In theory, in theory.
Someone make a recommendation. We'll vote.
Can we change the sign?
That would be done on the, would be on the machine, I don't know.
There's a nice painted sign that's in there. I don't know that it's been changed, so. If it's been changed.
I'll make the recommendation to go a dollar an hour.
I'd like it to be less than, uh, Main Street and lots of Main Street.
But we can't.
A dollars.
So we can take, we can make a consensus, but we'll put that on the agenda for the next part of the year. We can't take a fish license.
What's, what's, just give me an idea what the group wants and I'll put that on.
I support the dollar an hour, at least to start and then.
When you say start, by the time we get going July, I'll be open.
It has nothing to do with the construction guys, but after construction's done, is when we make our fundamental changes to what's to tell us as we do on the New Street. Maybe we'll know what's going on with the party structure then, blah, blah, and, and time. No easy answers, sir.
No, that's, so consensus for the group, everyone can live with a dollar? Rounded. I know you wanted five here.
We get more revenue, we need more revenue.
Okay, good. And then that just brings us down to.
How much should we pay?
Can't discuss wages, probably gonna be.
Is it in here?
It's in here.
It might be in here.
It really wouldn't be good to bring out a public.
But to say, maybe that's part of the problem, I, this, you know, wage inflation is huge.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we're not competitive anymore, I have no.
But it's a tough, have you, I mean, apartments you get from.
Well, you get a lot of things.
You get a lot of things?
That's my point, maybe they, maybe we're not paying enough, is my point.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what you're getting paid.
The sidewalk, the number one in Main Street looks beautiful.
Are you ready?
I can't wait.
See, it's, they're almost done up to the high peaks on the south side.
It is spectacular.
Yes, it's gonna soak right up to the street.
It is.
And then with that charcoal.
Oh, that's.
Really, it.
That's the other perfect.
It is shark.
And then blacktop.
Lots of blacktops.
Bottom of the line, but not today. Like, wow, they're really gonna try to line that?
So, so are they off the street tomorrow?
They got so much time.
No, tomorrow's their last.
Tomorrow's their last day, so they're off tomorrow at 6:50.
I go up at noon and I would say it's Mars.
Almost in the wrong way.
So, and say, all the way up to the Episcopal Church, they could open right now, but above that, they still have some work to do, so I'm sure they're, they're, they're close, they're buzzing up.
How did the vehicle go on the surface?
That's what they're made for. Rough and ready car.
Cruising down Main Street in the old buggy.
Oh, speaking, all right, who's in the parade?
I was gonna say, Rose will probably be a little rougher.
Who's in the parade?
I'm running.
All right. Fire truck, so first in line, post office on Parkside.
Actually, the first in line will be the.
American Legion, yes.
And then Jay's actually gonna ride with me in the Montle.
Okay.
So we're going to have detente here between the village and town, instead of deciding who's in the first vehicle.
And then hopefully, I don't know about all of the other cars, I know you wanted to be behind the mayor, but.
Blast in the Scooby.
Yeah, doesn't really do van.
And the good, yeah, VW van.
So.
Speaking from experience.
I don't know, I've had it for 20 plus years now, it's a funny good time.
Do you have other items? Because I wanted to.
I have one more. You want me to just do that real quick? So you finish up my one last item, okay. On August 21st, it will be the Saratoga Race Day. And for those of you that are not, haven't been on the board, it's a race that they use Lake Placid's name to give a little publicity for them and us. And we usually represent, if here goes and passes out a picture and goes to the champagne post staff.
Give, give probably Placid.
Okay.
Probably Placid race.
Yes. It's my birthday, I'll do it.
It's your birthday?
It's my birthday.
Should've said Jackie, said she'd be love to do it.
Well, it's somebody else who has more seniority. I'm the junior member, but if you want, if you wanna do it, you go right ahead.
The birthday card is.
Yeah, you got it.
Why don't I just give that, give that to Jackie, she'll have a little write-up and they'll have tickets for you for parking and then you have a box seat on the.
Okay.
I say the 20 yard line, the finish line.
How many people?
Think it's like a six-person box, but you gotta be very good friends if you're.
It's not so bad.
It's four, okay.
It's like a four-person hot tub, if you're good friends.
Sure, I don't wanna be taking it away from anybody.
Next year.
But you are.
In August, I'm pulling her out, I know a couple of kids are back to school.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we do it year after year, so there's plenty of opportunity for everyone to have a chance. Okay.
Well, what I wanted to is, I know that when I was really getting into the weeds about Kimball's hire, we tabled it. I talked to Peter and Kimball and was thinking of any sort of a compromise. And that compromise would be, at this, Monday's meeting, we, we advertise for one and they advertise.
I'm not ready for that yet, why don't you talk to me in private, you guys will discuss it.
You're, you're not ready for it?
No. One of those tough mayor decisions, I'm not, but like I said, I'll be happy to discuss in private with you guys.
Okay, sure, we can't kill, sell Kimball, we can't hire any.
Well, I don't think that was, is.
Like I said, let's, for now, let's discuss that in private. I'll give you all the background.
Well, I know all the background. I think, I think I've heard some of those, yeah, but I totally respect, the conversation can be helpful. It shows more to the story.
Yeah.
Am I more of just a question, or am I more of a question? Oh, it is the vacation rentals, since we dish towards compliance, I've seen some chat.
Remember, yes, remember, we did.
I don't.
But no, the village did, the town.
We, we addressed our pleasure with their, what was it, their inability to follow through with their.
Complaints.
Cool, so now, what, so what are we doing? Are we still with the village?
We don't have a choice. Code enforcement's done by the town.
And they looked into another software.
It supposedly, they start, no, a new company.
A new company.
And the company, I understand, has, their software went down, I think it'll be two weeks when they get it back. That's all I've been told.
There was a lot of chatter.
Yeah.
A lot of negative.
And of course, the cross had to.
I think it's sensitive. And I didn't want it to end.
Well, you combine that with the recommendations where they left, they, other than the sort of the modifications that were recommended by council, they left STRs kind of off the table. So there's no addressing it from a land use code, and then there's no enforcement or a pre-appearance of no enforcement, so it's like.
But they're probably right.
I understand.
No, and I think, from my perspective, we should be speaking to the public.
Well, so, I was part of the land use committee, and our folks too. So at last Thursday's unveiling of what we had been done, I really anticipated a lot of people asking about STRs, but believe it or not, the loudest, the most vocal group were the shoreowners.
The septic. I have so many complaints about that.
It's all draining water.
Can you talk, so, can you talk to the, that issue?
Well, so the recommendation was based upon the code office saying that it was an administrative error, that the way the language was written. So the language in the current code says, septic systems must be set back 300 feet from the shoreline or whatever is reasonable because of the landscape out there, whether you hit ledge or, or, or shot rock or whatever. So it was reworded and the shoreowners, in defense of them, really didn't get an opportunity to review this before this unveiling. So they had a lot of questions and it got a little bit, it, it did get a little bit angry.
Well, the general public didn't have a chance to really review it.
Well, no, but we, we were very, you know, it's a public hearing, it's a two-week process. Please give us, you know, your comments in two weeks, I mean.
Well, I was just speaking to the point with, they don't really should, they shouldn't have any more.
So, I mean, what it came down to is if you need to have your septic system less than 300 feet, you need to present engineering, certified engineering. If it's certified by an engineer and says it's not gonna affect water quality, what's the big deal?
Sure.
Except I heard a lot of people say sewer systems break down and then you're in trouble. Even though an engineer says it won't be, that's, I, I have a lot of emails telling me that, caretakers.
Yeah. But then, and that, and that part, it pumps.
Well, that, yeah, the stuff that goes wrong illegally and all of them up there, you know.
But you have to, you have a choice, because there's no gravity. So he goes into the septic and then you pump up the light up. So oftentimes, the old septic's fail and they're close to the lake.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Feet is not the issue, it's, it's the septic itself is close to it, it's like that's failing. And that's our drinking.
Does DTC come around and do guy tests?
That's a lot of discussion. Village employees have done that from time to time periodically, but it's, since this year's, it's been two years.
Oh, we're not talking merely, we're talking like classically, so it wouldn't be a village employee.
Well, it was.
Oh, it's village.
It's what we facilitate water. All before, when we've had the old shore plant, they used to do it all. And then, then Stuart Baird from time to time, way back in the day, there, there's been no consistent application and that's something that kind of has been, from my perspective, an oversight, but from a priority standpoint, it seems to have kind of fallen back. And it's another point, nobody's gonna wanna do it. Well, we, I mean, required, if you're proud.
Would be engineering.
Not gonna wanna do it, brass not gonna wanna do it, you know.
So who, who does?
But I think we should think of something, since it's our drinking water. I don't know, I think the two local municipalities should, since it's in the town and in the village, we should really come up with something. Doesn't hurt to go around, I don't know, but it wasn't drinking water, it's still a passion, I don't know. I like the water.
Well, it's tourism, forget drinking, I mean, it's our tourist base, it's.
It's all, it's a whole ball of fire.
It's our economy, that lake is our economy.
Well, the water, all, it's a show's disappearing exponential rate. I feel like it's kind of gold.
Does the Shore Owners Association addressing this at all?
Yes, so how it was left was, I, I think you might have been not peed in on it. Haley had taken all the chats, all the comments, and sent them to us for our review. And if you think, I mean, I'll forward it to you, but I'm pretty sure you got it, but.
I don't remember, but I would gladly.
So, so again, I think initially it was Georgia Jones and David Bunstead represented the Shore Owners Association with a list of 16 recommendations. I think we addressed maybe four or five of them, but they were going to go, there were, I mean, there had to have been 35, 40 people on that. And they were mostly shoreowners, I think they'll probably get a stronger voice now.
But you, you do have a code review group, I mean, it'd be good for them to take back.
Yes, next Tuesday, we will, yep.
And maybe, you know, if it takes more than two weeks, as long as you need, we get it right.
None of them are voters.
None of them are what?
Voters.
Voters?
Voters, they're voters. By necessity.
Well, the, the group we have is commissioned to find a solution, and we listen to people's opinions, see what can be done.
Sure.
We're at it right now, really don't have an answer for the age ones.
Now.
And that's another, do we take a position? And I think that's, this is you're the mayor.
I have the recommendation, you're just waiting for a chance to talk, sorry. Okay, I suggest we put a group together. And I, I can think of two people that are very vocal on Lake Placid, and I, I would very, have much liked to invite those two people to be on that and let's have something to find some answers. Doesn't have to be the lame code group. I mean, there are certain things we just can't do, we, we bump into the law. There are some things we can, there are some things that the code won't enforce, and if they're not enforcing, or they say they're not enforceable, then they shouldn't be in there, we should change them. And if it means making things much more strict to get where we have to be, I am just to the opinion, I do not think any, anybody that lives here should have to put up with parties and problems next door to residential neighborhood. It's just my attitude of vacation rentals, but I know everyone thinks it's great, but I just don't see why you can go into a residential neighborhood, rent house, and bring in double the people and have a party.
Yeah.
And not, I mean, I mean, there's a lot of them that are good out there, but if we can't police them, then we need to make things more stringent. If you are gonna run for all, and if code enforcement can police them, and they can, I mean, we've got, how many people have rented their 90 days and they're done? And they're still renting? There's no way right now, with my knowledge, for anyone to know.
Was that part of the post-compliance?
That was, they were supposed to have, we were told they have a scrubber program, they're gonna be able to tell when things weren't, weren't. Last I talked, this new group does have that, they're going to go back and do it. But I think we need someone to stay on top of that and, and see, is it being done?
This year, they're all trying to see if they're gonna get caught.
Well, that's.
And if they don't get caught, then next year, it's gonna be wide open.
Right.
Here, remember, you can't speak about that. This is public media because we're not allowed to talk about it under litigation. All you can say is that we can't speak about it this time because we're under litigation. And so we're out from under that. We can't proceed any further. But it doesn't mean we can't force what we already have, which is the 90 day rule. Does anybody here wanna take on the job, taking on the group and, and see what can be done with Mike's office? I might know you've already taken on both launches and support. Have a conversation with Mike to see what his office willing to do.
It's all this, what, I think it comes across Mike willing to do whatever's on the paper, but like, no, he's not.
Well, not that he's not willing, he doesn't have the manpower.
Right.
That's, that's the problem. I mean, we would need to expand that.
Well, we, but then post compliance took the, in lure of a person.
So the money that we paid.
It was always an intention to hire someone. And don't forget there was money there, but that money was used for.
Haley.
Haley. But there's, there's a lot.
So there is money there.
There's a lot more money than that than Haley. So this, there's the enforcement component of it. Or, but is there like another way of, and I hear a few people as far as how do we devise a sort of a more of a simplistic approach to taxation between a year round resident and a short term rental?
That's another dollop of access. Wait until we find out. I think, well, if we can legally do anything, we have lawsuits, we can't talk about it. Once that's over, then there's time to talk.
I'm just saying this is, it's been modeled as.
I agree.
Other communities.
Has it? Once you get the legal law involved, we'll see what we tend and can't do. But I would suggest something along the lines of you could sign something that says, I will never use my property or like a deed restriction for a vacation rental. I would have to see if that's legal, but it would seem like you, then your property is worth less, your property value should go down. Cause what makes your property more valuable is the guy next to you puts in vacation rental.
You take a delta.
Something that is deed. And if you put something into the village and says, I will never use this vacation rental or someone that I sell to, now your property just went down in value by about 40%.
That's good.
It's not good if you wanna sell your property. And when I mentioned that to other people, they go, what if I wanna sell? Well, you can't advocate neither too. It's just a thought and until we get done.
This would be a solution to keep people. Well, play your own, right? Locals, they pay too much because of.
Because of the, yeah.
So if you were to form an act committee?
It's a good idea.
That's just a thought, until we can do something.
Well, I think we can explore it.
What kind of mix of people would you put on this committee?
Like I said, I can think of someone up on Hillcrest that's been a component. She has the person next to her that she has complaints against. She's got every time they stayed there, license plate. I mean, how much more could you ask? Then what's the committee gonna do?
Well.
Just find out if they can't do what they said they could do, then what are we doing about it? I mean, I hate to say it, but I'm keeping up. When it says, how you doing as mayor, I'm treading water. I can't, I can't take on keeping eyes. If some of you guys wanna jump on that, that'd be great. But if not, I'll do my best to keep it in my, my curfew. But if someone's got some time, that'd be great. I just don't see the, what the committee's gonna accomplish in this because we don't have an avenue for enforcement right now.
But the whole point is to try.
That's right. Find a solution.
And if they go up to Mike where to selling and he said, well, give me another person at $42,000, I'll, I'll enforce it. I'm just saying, what if that is the response we get?
Well, I don't, which is, which is fine. I don't know that that's what we're getting, but supposedly this new, supposedly the old post compliance is supposed to be able to go on for scrubber and say, this person has rented this number of days, they're up to 90, they can't rent anyone. At that point, Mike should be making sure they're not posting and advertising a drop in. They're done for the year. And that has to be done. And I don't know that, that's the biggest complaint.
Correct.
Biggest complaint is nobody has a number they can call. Well, there was a number, it only disappeared in the last week, two weeks.
And I.
Like, nobody has, you mean currently there's another number.
Right.
Why? That's why I'd like to know that too.
Is that because of post?
I believe it's because we switched to a new number, a new group. And maybe they do have a number, to be honest with you. It's the first, all of a sudden, we had a group come to town, but it's been a problem and all of a sudden it's a problem.
But this doesn't make it communicated. I guess Jay has not communicated this to you.
First I knew that we had a problem, that there wasn't a number, it was the night before last or last night, I can't remember which it was. Somebody called me and said that the number wasn't working. And then when I checked into it, it sounds like their program is down, but I don't know. We're switching over and it sounds like one of those getting started problems. And I've been given the number of two weeks. And also someone called and said, I was having big problems with my neighbor, this, that, the other thing. I said, you don't have to wait for a number, you can call the police. And he goes, well, it was just a cross player throwing a ball in my tree. Well, he didn't tell me that at the beginning. And then all of a sudden this blasted on the thing that I was told to call the police for mid. You got, I got 10% of the information. I just said, you can call, cause I've had people say, well, how, I have to call this number? I said, you don't have to. If it's a problem, you can call the police. You can call this number, you can do whatever you want. And I, I mentioned that to him. It sounded like he had a serious problem. And then all of a sudden, at the end of the conversation, the next thing I know, on Facebook saying.
Come back with that.
So you can't win.
Welcome to politics.
You know, and I also get, there's a lot of frustration out there, there's a lot of anger. I'd be angry too. So I'm not upset that he, I got partial information, I tried to be helpful and that was the end of it. Like I said.
I, where else?
You have to keep time given.
I circle back and I guess that's where, and I know that your approach is to communicate with the town to build some sort of consensus and cohesion and then have a singular message and theory that you've been put in a position and the board as a result would have been put in a position where at the very minimum, because we've been put in a position in my case, you could always talk to me, but if you, if things happen without us, at least you can communicate to your constituents.
That's not true. While you're saying that, I understand you, but we have post compliance. It was supposed to be a place where you could call. It was supposed to check how many nights you're renting. I understand they weren't doing their job, they left them. And now all of a sudden, two nights ago, I found that we have problems with them. That's all I know. Nothing was communicated, anything.
That's all.
But if you would like, if you wouldn't mind, find out what's going on. Get our liaison up there, go up and check and see what is there and bring it back to us with, you know, if they're, if they say there's nothing we can do until this group gets up. Well, that's where we're stuck. But maybe we can get that out to the public on the website or something.
I like to think that I'm a collaborator and mediator, but if I find that answers aren't necessarily forthcoming, I'm more apt to just share that out loud.
That's okay. I mean, tell the truth.
I'm just letting you know.
Tell the truth, we'll tell the truth.
I have, I have, I have trouble.
filter?
Yes.
Well, you're, it shouldn't be a problem. Been trusting you for a long time. I mean, tell the truth, be honest and do what you can.
Alright.
You're just, just all keep in mind that we are under executive orders. We cannot discuss the laws that are going on. I mean, that part of it is just off the table. But it doesn't mean we can't enforce what's already in place.
But we, in essence.
Right. Well, I mean, there is.
That's what I tried to mitigate. We cannot enforce it. We, we, it's a town office. We can say, please enforce that, even though it's a joint office, but we can't.
If you're getting an answer that you can't, then let me know and I'll talk to Jay.
Alright, great. Doug, dig deeper. What do you mean, we, of course?
We as a village board or as a village, no, we cannot enforce it.
The village doesn't have code enforcement office. We rely.
It's a joint, but it's.
Yes, I've found that. A lot of things.
We don't hire them.
I mentioned. We also don't pay for it. I mean, it goes on the town taxes and the revenue that from building.
So maybe.
Mike's more than doubled the revenue since compared to Morgeson on the building. Not surprisingly. Anyway, you're sort of, I talked to Anthony about some kind of tax. We made him, if you will, for property taxes similar to the SARG example. And he said, we could do that specifically if basically anyone who is not a vacation rental. But it would take years. It would have to run state legislature, full town, just sort of two sessions, that kind of. Yes, it can be done, but it would take.
I would still think as long as you're willing to say that my property will not or in the future be done as a vacation rental, then that would devalue your property because you couldn't sell it for as much. And if your property isn't worth as much, your assessment should be down and that should solve the problem. Maybe I'm oversimplifying.
I still believe that vacation rentals are an intrinsic part of our economy.
They are.
And she know we have, we're working on something we're not allowed to discuss and we need her handcuff. But at some point, we talked about having a discussion with board with April, maybe in the near future, that's something we should do.
I, maybe we should have one sooner.
Than the near future?
Yeah.
I don't know how much sooner than the near future is.
Alright, I will, I will mention it. And also when I was at Night Con and I was talking with Wade about that, Wade said he'd be very happy to sit in on that meeting with us. Cause there were a lot of questions I don't have about.
You were frustrated because really can this type of litigation really tie our hands?
Well, for three years.
The bigger question is, you know, that's a possibility. We don't know that. But Wade said he'd be happy to sit in and, you know, that is his area of expertise as he's municipal law. Our attorney is also a law. If we can get everyone together, at least we can have another opinion on it. So.
I know I should ask Wade or somebody ask Wade. I mean, we've looked at, or the committee looked at all these different laws that were written. From all across the country, all across.
Yeah.
Are they all being litigated or is this?
Right. Are we the only?
Are we the only one?
Yeah.
I doubt, maybe they're all being litigated. We don't know. That's a good question. I'll reach out. We gotta, we had to compile the list of all the other places and just call there and they used them and called it.
So if we were to follow the logic behind that, we, the village can't do anything. That means if anybody within the village has a complaint about STRs.
Are you discussing what we're not allowed to discuss?
Oh crap, yes. Thank you for reminding me.
But you're talking about the process, you're not talking about actual.
I think we've, we gotta be very careful what we say because we are in a public meeting. Just to be told not to say anything. I mean, it doesn't mean that we can't try to have a conversation with April. And I, I think it'd be very good to take Wade up on his offer. It's just one more set of ears and Janet. And let's see what we get.
I'm sure you just said it before our report. I mean, we brought up this April thing two, two months ago with Janet.
She, no litigation.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So that never happened?
What's that?
Jim, that may have.
To bring, she said we could, but we hadn't told her to do it yet.
We haven't.
At this point, we, the near future's here, which should, should I try to arrange something?
That's right.
Okay, they didn't know. Stars next to it.
Circle it, underline it.
I did.
Bold it.
And I presented, I didn't, alright, it's outside.
Frustrating.
Yeah.
It's, it's tough, especially since the Georgia rule. And I've not discussed.
For the 20th time.
It's so cool, man.
Well.
Okay, is there anything else to come before our group? I think I got everything we said, wrote everything down.
What's gonna happen at the board meeting?
I don't know, the next few days. Firewall.
Yeah, of course.
What, sorry, I was waiting. Can you tell me what happened? Mindy and Kimball, Digger and.
Oh, we bought a new digger for $6,850,000 million.
The old digger, the 30 year old digger.
Mindy explained the COVID funding. There wasn't much exciting there. The diggers being sent down because it's even $10,000. They're going to pick it up, get us out of the liability and so we don't have to send our men. We agreed to the Ironman guidance. You were here for the talk on all the.
So going back, the salaries that we were discussing for the department heads were done.
Which we're also not allowed to do in a public meeting, but yes, I had conversations with everybody. Well, you can mention that, we can, you just can't mention what they are, but.
No, I wasn't, but, but it was discussed the way we had discussed it previously.
Changed.
It, it was a, an amount that was divided the way we had decided.
Yep. And I'm talking with everybody and everyone's for it.
Okay.
All the department heads, we spoke to.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. You know, you said, you're the mayor, you're the sci- I think you did.
Did I what she said to him?
He's, he does sometimes. Peter, what's your opinion? I go, oh, you're the mayor, you're telling me. He likes to throw that. They like to tell me I get the big dollars.
You do, you make a bit mine. You're, you're the six K.
Congratulations, by the way.
Which I'm referring to.
The next one on the way.
Oh, oh, the next one. I'm just. Seven weeks. I got one coming right now.
Are we ending the meeting?
We gotta be ready to make a motion. Didn't we already do that? After the public hearing?
Yes, we did. This is a word.
Yeah, right?
Once again, I teach you.
Oh, yeah, that's all in the first time.